So the next item on our agenda is recommendations for safely reopening school buildings. And this comes out of Children's Hospital of Philadelphia Policy Lab. And I'll introduce Dr. David Rubin. David? You're muted.
Yeah, I just want to make a couple of opening comments and then I'll quickly let go to the Q and A. Because I think the decisions about reopening schools are very locally derived. And they have to do with your, the buildings, your capability in terms of distancing students and other things. I will say that we're operating under a couple assumptions here. I will guide you to go to the policylab.chop.edu page for our school guidance, which is really a menu of options that curates all the available evidence that continues to unfold even this week. Some of the assumptions we make is that we need to understand, I think, I know the focus is on the students, but it really has to be more about the caregivers and your teachers and your staff. The kids are really at low risk. I need to emphasize that. They're at higher risk in some ways from influenza. The hospitalization rate is probably less than one per thousand in the, in this age group. Most kids, most kids are asymptomatic or mildly symptomatic when they, when they get this virus. They also are infected at far fewer rates, at least with regards to PCR testing, maybe even tenfold less than adults. And there's some emerging evidence that they don't transmit as effectively as adults because they don't have as many respiratory symptoms. Now, you know, as I've been talking to K to 12 and higher education schools, the focus has been there's a lot of anxiety out there among families. Am I going to take, send my kid back? To me, the anxiety as a physician and our infection control team at CHOP is more for the potential transmission that might occur from a staff member or from a teacher or the health considerations of that staff member or teacher or of the family members at home, particularly those who are either compromised or may be older and may be worried about being exposed. So that said, when you look at the menu of options, you need to understand those dynamics and realize that the moments of transmission in a school setting are really about symptomatic individuals, often adults, at times when there might be large crowds are gathering. And there's, there's also an aspect, and that's from respiratory transmission. And then there's an aspect of fomite or what we call surface contact transmission, where that requires good hand hygiene and frequent disinfection. And so the kind of initiative is when you talk about respiratory transmission that you're seeing out there, they talk about sort of when are we going to wear masks? Or how, how far to space apart the tables or the chairs that students are sitting in? How far to distance the teachers? Should they be wearing face masks or she, or shields? Yeah, those are the type of things you do for respiratory transmissions. How many kids on a bus, right? And then on the hygiene side, it's washing your hands every time you walk in. It's, it's maybe moving kids out of cafeterias where they're sharing food and trying to kind of limit that as much. And then the frequent disinfection of bathrooms in the school in general, in terms of what we think about. Now, that's a lot to take up. And as I've worked with different school districts, there's all the things you could do and there's the things you will do. And you, I'm sure by now you've read the Bucks County guidance on how they unpacked it. And having spoken to the Department of Education, they intentionally did not get prescribeded because we're operating under a sort of what our best choices are here for each individual school district. I would think that at a minimum, what I would be focusing on is your sick policy and how you're doing what we call daily symptom screening of, of kids and staff in terms of the school environment. That relates to whether you use an app or whether you just have families that, you know, highly educated that no kid with respiratory symptoms or with, with obvious symptoms that could potentially be COVID be admitted into school, you know, during the daytime, same with the teachers. And the more, the more rigorously you enforce your sick policy and you, and you can even extend that to exposures at home as some ways, if there's a known COVID positive patient at home, you then have a number of options. We have what's called the symptomatic child who is tested positive. That student can go to online learning, likely will be mildly infected because it's rare when we have the severe syndrome. But that student does not need to be retested before school entry, can return to school 72 hours after the fever has resolved and once the, and assuming respiratory symptoms are resolved. The asymptomatic child who may have been exposed, right? Is, is the one that, you know, that people talk about. Now, if a child is asymptomatic, I think you have two choices. One, if you're not testing them, then they should quarantine for, for a couple of weeks and do online learning from home. That's the best way to kind of see whether they're going to become symptomatic. You could, you know, that, that's as conservative as you get on that window. But if, if the child gets tested and is PCR negative and is asymptomatic, it doesn't mean that there isn't a possibility that child might become symptomatic. It just makes it a lot lower risk to bring that child into the school environment. If you wanted to be a little extra cautious for the exposed child who you are permitting back, you could have them wear a mask. But I'm not even sure you need to do that. But to me, the strict guidance is around sort of identifying symptomatic kids or adults. The teachers themselves, the people who really need to be masked effectively and distanced effectively are the teachers and the staff. And there are newer masks actually come out. I think there's a company called Clearview that's starting to make a mask that actually has some transparency to it, which may be helpful, not just for hearing impaired children, but for children with ADHD. Kids are distractible. I think it's important, it's hard to teach when, when people, for some kids, when they can't see the teacher, what's coming, you know, them talking. And so I think we need to recognize that. But they need to be masked. The face shield is a nice option. Goggles are as well. But if the teacher's standing 10, 15 feet away, that's great too. I've seen some districts are putting up sort of like a sort of, they're using Plexiglas at the wheeling in like a chalkboard, right? And they're separating the teachers from the kids. These are all different creative solutions people have done to try to keep the, to space the teachers away from kids. I'm not sure it's necessary to do that. But at the very, at a minimum for those teachers who are in the district, I would mask them or put a face shield on unless they're teaching outside in the, in the warm weather and they're 10, 15 feet away from their students. I think it's fine for them to take off the mask in those types of settings. If you're working, if you're in a large gym and they can distance, I think that's a little bit better in terms of ventilation. But that, that to me is the, you know, and then along with hand washing and hygiene and disinfection of your bathrooms and crowd control of your bathrooms, I think that to me is the essence of the, of what I call the, the backbone of what your strategy is going to be. And everything you add to that is not going to be as incrementally effective as what we just talked about. Now, with regards to masking of students, I think, you know, people, no one's not going to tell you not to mask the students, but I think it's, I think it's potentially a huge distraction, particularly in younger children. I'm not sure they can effectively do it. I think it'll become a distraction of enforcement within the, it'll become a distraction of enforcement, at least within the, the schools themselves. I think you could probably ask the middle schoolers or the high school kids to do it more effectively. But I think you saw that, you know, Bucks decided not to mask any of the kids and they're focusing on their staff. And I think that was a logical choice, knowing what we're knowing, knowing what we're learning about transmission. It's just about how risk tolerant you're willing to be. As far as the spacing of desks, you see, you know, for a long time, we've talked about six feet and certainly the adults need to really honor that. The WHO recommendations that people have saw about three feet, what's three feet? At, at some point, you have to have an honest appraisal, three feet, what does that mean? That's people trying to make an assumption about the fact that children are less transmissible. But at three feet, you might as well just assume that you do your best to, to limit occupancy in rooms if you can. But you're not going to be very effective controlling kids in a classroom and saying you can't get within six feet or three and a half feet or four feet or five feet. And, and I just have some practical concerns of whether that's accomplishable. I think it's more accomplishable to move, to use either community buildings or use large gymnasiums, space kids out. You go outside, you know, spend more time outside. But, but really focus on the spacing of the teachers and the cafeteria staff. That to me is where, where the, where, where the value is for all your interventions. So I'm going to stop there. I've covered a lot and there are going to be very specific questions. But that's how I've unpacked what, what can be very confusing recommendations to try to find a practical solution that people could feel comfortable with. And we can also talk during Q and A about, well, what do you advise parents when their kids come home from school? And so I'll stop there and we can cover your questions.
Bridget, you have your hand up?
Yes, I just wondered what your thinking was on groupings of students. I've seen some guidance to try to limit the movement of students through school, which is easier for me to imagine in the lower grades, but not in a high school where the teaching is so specialized and typically requires kids to move from room to room. Do you have some thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think it's, you know, look, if you, if you kept the same cohort together every day, you're going to have less mixing and so that'll help in terms of the kids. But it's also about practicality. It's not going to be as valuable as your intervention that's focused on protection your teachers. And so having the kids rotate and the teachers kind of be walled off is probably higher value because the most likely transmitter in that school is the teachers and the staff. And we've seen that from data overseas as well, that within households, the, the direction of transmission has most often been from the parent to the children. And, and so, you know, I think that's one of those decisions you just have to think about. Yes, does it add value? But how disruptive is that to your school policy? There's a certain amount of accommodation to risk and practical solutions that you have to do when you're, when you're developing this policy.
Antoinette?
Thanks. Yeah, I had a couple of questions and points I wanted to discuss. I think, I think it was great that you just jumped right into the weeds, but just to like back up a little bit. You know, the report that came out from CHOP very clearly says that this, you know, prioritizing in school learning. And so, and I, and I really, you know, appreciate that. I think we've heard that from a lot of members of the community and students as well. And so, you know, this is given a lot of different factors. And so I guess I just want to get your opinion on if we were going to go back to school tomorrow or this week, next week, that would be your recommendation. Your recommendation would be to that in-school learning should be prioritized with, with safety measures.
Yeah, I think we're also learning from Europe. We haven't seen big, big sort of outbreaks related to schools reopening, at least not yet. And so you're having more and more data accumulated as to what is actually the risk. And, and you know, the, the closing of schools was controversial even back in February, March because people weren't sure about the, how much marginal benefit you were getting from closing the schools. At the time, it was all hands on deck because we were not prepared. But I could, you know, my opinion, based on the transmissibility data from the new, the new nature article that, that you may, that you may have heard of this week, is we should be getting kids back in school and we should be trying to keep them in school. And that our best community interventions are masking in crowded locations, a focus on hand hygiene, gathering size. And if we did those things well as a community and protected our outbreak locations, it's that the schools are not going to be the main source of problem and neither have the daycares.
Thank you for that. And so I do, I want to go back to what you were discussing about, you know, the six feet distancing, which I think has become sort of synonymous with, you know, the recommendations that the public as a large have been given. But, you know, from, from what I understand from the report and what you're discussing now, there's no research that six feet works better in a school than five feet or four feet. And I mean, just with our classrooms in particular, having six feet of distance could be a potential impossibility.
You give up on the, on the, on the three, six feet on the kids and give me 10, 15 feet for the teachers and the staff.
Right. So, so I guess, so that, so that would be a way to get around the six feet. Would be protect the, the staff, like you're saying, more with more distance.
I'd say that protecting the staff is also protecting the students because they're, they're, they're the most likely transmitter in the school. And so being very, if you're going to use the tests that you have and the surveillance, you really want to be on the teachers and the staff because you really need them to be honest. You need to have paid leave for teachers and staff if they have exposures at home. That's how you're going to keep COVID, a COVID outbreak out of your school.
Great. I'm sorry, I have a couple more questions. Um, so I, I, because I do just want to focus on this mask issue too, which I brought up. You know, it's something that I think that probably a lot of people in the community don't, don't understand. And so your recommendation is masking is important for our, our staff, our teachers. But masking is not really going to make a difference to our kindergartner. And, and so.
I just don't know if it's, if it's accomplishable. It's also going to be, there's a trade-off in the distraction to learning. And, you know, from my perspective, this is about the practical. This is, we've talked, you know, there are some times that are decisions that are made for liability that are made to, to, to address anxiety. But, you know, the downside of masking younger children, you know, is pretty significant and the, the potential benefit is uncertain. I think we need to understand that in kids. I'm not talking about adults. When you're in those markets, the adults, you know, people should be wearing masks, you know, as people are going through those markets. We're learning, I mean, what's happening in Florida right now and in Texas and Arizona and our, and our team is following closely was preventable. People did not want to accept the, the trade-off of wearing masks in those locations. But schools are a different environment because you're dealing with less transmissible disease and also less, you know, less of an issue in terms of impact. It doesn't mean that a kid can't get really sick. We've seen a few, but it's on the order of rare. And, and I think that we need to understand that and, and factor that into the practical solutions we create for school.
Just to interject with a clarification, when you're saying adults, we have kindergartners, but also students are up to the age of 18, which in instances counts as an adult. Where is, is with all of this?
So I would reflect that back, you know, I thought about that. I think that, you know, some places would say just let all the students. I think it's a good civics experiment for your high school kids for sure to learn how to wear masks. They're old enough, whether, you know, the question is what's the trade-off in terms of, and certainly the risk goes up for, for transmission as you get to those 14 to 18-year-olds. Do you do it at sixth grade? Do you do it at ninth grade? And these are the kind of, there is no evidence to guide you there, but I think it does make some sense to involve the older kids in the plan.
Okay. Antoinette, any other questions?
Yeah, just really quickly for the benefit of the, of the public, can you just discuss how important it is that everyone in the public is updated on their current vaccines? The vaccines that they're supposed to be getting, you know, just in, just in the regular course?
Yeah, so a couple of things on that. Absolutely, in terms of regular vaccinations. If we, if we fall down below MMR vaccination rates, we're going to have problems with, we're going to have more problems than COVID on our hands. It's when you fall down below a certain level of community coverage that you start to get into measles epidemics. That's a real problem. A real big one for, for this year, I mean, you know, is influenza vaccination. All my comments about COVID disease are qualified with a but. We've never seen COVID and flu in the same child. And that's, you know, influenza is an ugly infection in kids. For those, I have, we have seen enough in CHOP over the years with healthy kids. We've lost what, three or four kids in the United States to COVID thus far, maybe a few more. We lost 150 this past flu season and some of those kids were healthy. Just so to me, a, a really rigorous influenza vaccine campaign is going to be critical this winter to assuring safety of our students. Keeping your immunizations up to date, keeping pertussis out of your, your, because a kid with pertussis is going to be coughing for weeks. You never get that kid back into school. Plus, you know, in terms of infecting other folks and potentially exposing younger infants and elderly folks in the community to a pertussis outbreak. So those 11-year-old vaccines and those four-year-old vaccines that get you into school, really, really important.
Okay.
That's everything I had. I really appreciate you being here and going over all this with us. It really benefits us in our decision-making, but also the community as a whole. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Dave, you're up next.
I'll listen to her first. I love her.
Okay, Kristin?
Put me on the spot, Dave. No, thank you. So I have a few questions. I'm thinking about school buses. I saw the recommendation was that students should wear masks on the school bus. I guess a question to consider is why are we, why are we asking students to wear masks on buses but not in schools? And I guess a question for the district is how are we going to enforce that? And what would consequences look like if students are refusing to wear masks on buses?
It's a part of your equation, right? Which is, and you put requirement to is to be enforced. Otherwise, it's not a requirement and that, and there's a lot that goes into that. I think as I talk to other school districts, you remember, these are a menu of options. I suspect that your school, but you know, there are options to increase the number of school buses, just ask kids to space out. I suspect a lot of parents, just out of safety or concerns about safety, are going to drive their kids to school. So I'd be worrying about your parent pickup line and how you're going to get, get those cars in and out of those schools. Because, you know, I think understanding from the parents, how many wish to use the bus versus not can help sort of potentially alleviate the concern about the buses because you have fewer kids on your buses, but could aggravate issues in terms of traffic at the, at the school. And so I think there's a dynamic there that you can play off of. A lot of school districts don't have the extra resources to get extra buses. And I think whatever you do in the school with regards to older versus younger kids probably can be mirrored on the, on the school buses.
And then thinking about younger children and asking them or not requiring them to wear masks. I know there's a whole range of parental perspectives on children wearing masks. I have friends who don't have their children wear masks because they don't want them to be traumatized. I'm pregnant currently, so we're very, you know, we've socialized my daughter to wear a mask and she has basically learned that, you know, people who don't wear masks are doing the wrong thing. That's just the way, you know, that's how we get her to wear a mask, basically. So where I'm going with this though, just wondering, does CHOP offer any resources? Or do we know of any resources out there that can kind of help children understand that maybe when they come back to school, they don't need to wear a mask? Like I'm just, I'm thinking.
We just, just developed new fact sheets for schools and they're being developed with Susan Coffin from Infection Control. If you email me offline, I will make sure, once those documents are finished, they, they get into some of these questions about, about guidance for parents around school. They're, they're less focused on school districts and they're more focused on parents from CHOP's perspective and we can share those. It is confusing. I, I just want to agree with you. And, you know, the question is if you, you know, it, it's not an easy decision because a lot of families have worked really hard to get the kids to start wearing the mask. And there's certain settings, I think they should still wear a mask, like in the markets and in those areas where there are a lot of adults around that could potentially expose them because putting the kid close to the adult is the differentiator there, right? And, and that's how I would message it to them, right?
And just a pedagogical question, I guess a consideration for the district. Just thinking about if we are going back to school and students are three or six feet apart or however we, we configure them, this is really going to create a pedagogical shift. I know we're focusing a lot of energy and resources on what the digital space is going to look like for learning. But I know in our classrooms, there was a focus on socio-cultural approaches, socially constructed learning, having students in small group, lots of student talk. I just think this is really going to shift the way that we're teaching our children when they come back to these reconfigured in-person spaces. So just another consideration for us. Thank you.
Dave?
Thanks. And thank you, Dr. Rubin. This has been very informative, actually. And actually very good to hear for a lot of people. I have one question, I have two questions actually. One, did you, do you have any thoughts or any guidance on contact tracing with regards to those who, who may be positive? Is there any kind of?
As we talked about this with Infection Control, I think it has to really be a close contact. So if you're going to have a few cases in your school, we're, we're going to be at a different level of whether you're going to go back to online learning and quarantining. I think it's going to be very difficult to trace all the kids and have them all get tested. This is really a conversation with your, with, do you have an independent health department in Hereford? Or are you part of the state Department of Health?
We are farmed out to Chester County currently because Delaware County does not have a health department.
Okay, yeah. And so I think there is a marriage that needs to happen here between the Department of Health and the schools. I don't think schools should be doing their own contact tracing. So the degree to which, which contact tracing is going to occur is really, you know, what, what the schools can do is the surveillance of like, are you sick or are you exposed to anyone who is sick? Once, you know, and, and keeping kids out who are asymptomatic. If you have a child who was asymptomatic and then becomes sick and doesn't come to school, the question of what to do with the other kids is, you know, is really a question of a discussion with the Chester, the Chester's Department of Health as to is there enough? Do they want to contact trace everyone in that classroom? And if you get a few cases, you've seen schools elsewhere close down quickly. The other is to assume that there are also, there are measures in between where you might do masks for a few days of the kids within that classroom as you wait to see if anyone becomes symptomatic as an extra precaution. So there's different variations there, but I don't think it's, the schools should be doing their contact tracing themselves. This should be done by the Department of Health and based on the guidance from the, from the Health Department.
Okay. And my other question was, not to get too far into the weeds here, but just thinking about an issue of supplies and so forth. For teachers, you do recommend masking for them. There's been a lot out there about what masks are most effective, N95 versus simple cloth versus whatever. Just to, just so we can plant ahead a little bit.
Yeah, I'm going to be very clear about the masks, right? So I don't think N95s are necessary. We're not using them at CHOP. We're not using it at Penn, right? In, in everyone. We're using them in special circumstances where we're providing aerosolized treatments when the risk is higher because of the aerosolized, like a nebulizer. So your school nurses, I would not, I would prohibit the use of nebulizers in the schools. They should use inhalers and spacers for the kids. It's, it's much safer in terms of aerosolization, but a good surgical mask is better than a cloth mask. And those are pretty cheap to come by now on Amazon. They usually have, you can fold them at the bridge. I do think goggles, if you can't do face shields, goggles also help in terms of direct contact to the eyes. Some of the clear goggles can help as well too. But I don't think it needs to be an N95. Would, would I make an exception for someone who's, you know, a teacher who might be, you know, compromised or have severe lung disease or something like that? Sure. I think there's always the permutation that's a little bit different. But, but I think just good hygiene, distancing and just a surgical mask and, you know, whether a shield or goggles is probably going to be fine.
Okay, thank you.
Next is Sal.
Dr. Rubin, thank you for being with us today. I just want to go back to that concept of working with the local and state health officials. I, I think a lot of what we're hearing today is very positive in terms of our students being able to be in an environment that is, you know, a positive environment for, for learning. Are we still going to be in a situation where we need to be prepared to potentially shut our schools down? And, and what is, in your opinion, obviously deferring to our local health officials, when the threshold of that would potentially happen?
Well, certainly if we have uncontrolled widespread transmission, they're going to shut it down or go to online learning. I think we talked about having sort of a very flexible schedule, like you should have. And it can be differentiated. It could be in three or four different stages. When you're in full learning, you think about as a district, when you might go to some sort of flex scheduling for kids, when you might go to online learning. You know, the, the one that seemed the most pragmatic to me, which I thought was really innovative, was some school districts, when they, when there's some level of increasing transmission in order to space the kids out, are moving the high school kids to remote learning because they tend to do a little bit better with the remote learning than the younger kids. And then they're moving the elementary, the middle school kids into the high schools. Like they're spacing kids out into more classrooms, right? And, and fewer kids per classroom. That one seemed a little bit more practical for a couple of districts that I work with. But in general, I think it's mostly going to be full school learning, some online learning. Versus online learning is going to be the most practical solution. And I'm hoping that if we don't see a lot of transmission in schools or big outbreaks and we haven't seen them to date, that we're just going to continue in school learning until we have a situation where we have enough disease burden in the community where we have to go to online schooling again. And that might be later in the fall. That's led to some recommendations to open up earlier, like, you know, maybe a couple of weeks early. I know that's a tricky decision for a lot of school boards to open up in mid-August. My daughters are, I can see them behind me. They're already looking at me with cross eyes on that decision. The kids are already kind of doing sports in the, in the late summer. So that's a possibility. And also thinking about going to online learning, planning either for online learning after Thanksgiving or planning for a longer winter break because I, I do worry that the winter is going to be harder than we can manage with, with full in-school learning and that we know from influenza that if we have an extended winter break, it does help reduce community transmission.
So you, so you do see that as potentially a fluid situation in which?
Oh, absolutely.
We're looking at numbers throughout the year and making decisions based on what those numbers say?
Absolutely, absolutely. And that's where the Health Department, I think you're going to, the state's eventually going to provide guidance if they think you're at a level where they, where they absolutely need to have you go back. But we're working with the state to, to tell them that that's not your first move. Getting kids out of school is not the, you know, and I think as we have more evidence, do I think it's possible that we might reach a? I do, I think it's possible that we might reach a a situation where other things happen, the kids stay in school? Absolutely. Um, and I think you're seeing that in other areas right now. We're going to have, we still have, we're still gathering evidence from Europe. We're going to have more evidence from. From overseas as we move into the fall as well. And I think it'll be very clear based on the patterns that we're seeing, whether we're going to online learning or whether we're going to push through with school even as sort of uh community cases increase. We have two X factors, which are the vaccine, uh, that I'm very much uh knowledgeable of the developments there. I think it's a bit of a crapshoot if I'm being honest with you as to whether it's going to work. I think it's likely to be safe. Um, there's a lot, there's a lot, you have the best people in the world working on this. I think it's more likely going to be ready for the following year. So hopefully it'll be, uh, that. But if we get lucky and and one of these vaccines work and we're able to deploy them. I think teachers and staff are probably going to be, you know, I I would be advocating for teachers and staff in schools to be one of the early recipients. Uh, alongside our healthcare professionals and our grocery store clerks and our prison guards and. And the and the staff in nursing homes. These are the folks that are high exposure or mass transit folks who are high exposure workers. Um, but I think beyond that is the possibility that we're going to get better treating COVID. And I think we, you know, I've seen some optimism in in the last few days that if we can bring down the case fatality rate. Because we've learned how better to treat the complications, which by the way are mostly immune mediated, the severe disease is a huge immune aspect to this. And if we get better at treating the immune related aspects of this, we saw a study about dexamethasone that people may have read about. A couple of days ago. What's the fatality rate? If we can get that to drop a bit, and I think we are going to get better with it over time, that changes the calculus. And I think another is going to be another argument to keep kids in school.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Next, Bridget.
I had um two additional questions. One was, it sounds like the plans are largely for staff and and families to. Self-assess and report symptoms and it seems like some of the symptoms have overlaps with other kind of common ailments, allergies, whatnot. Um, so I'm curious what your take is on on what education. Should we could be doing to help improve that assessment? And the second question then is about, um. Are there activities that are typical in schools that you would advise not occurring? I'm thinking of. Sports, band, chorus, um, those kinds of activities and.
CHOP just released its sports guidance today, so really good stuff. I don't have all the time to cover all of it, but it's a really good plan. Very easy to follow and understand that was developed between our team of policy lab, our sports medicine team, our injury team. And our infection control folks. And so, um, you can visit our site and 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 get access to the sports guidance documents. It also has this sort of ramp up and different activities you can do at different levels of community transmission. Clearly on the sports stuff, you have um hot, not all sports are created equal. Tennis is fine, right? Lots of hand hygiene, but tennis is fine, but football is a different sport and certainly indoor basketball is a different sport because you have a lot of close. Contact and potential for transmission over an extended period of time, you know, and sweat and all it. And and all the such, but that doesn't mean that at low, at low periods of transmission, kids can't play and there are different ways and they're discussed in these documents of, uh. You know, if you're doing foot more focused testing or surveillance, really focusing on those contact sport athletes. And and really being strict about who is able to play or not play. And a lot of that is reviewed in that documentation. There might be periods of time as well that you can't play those kind of sports because the transmission in the community. Is too high. So starting your season earlier and ending it earlier in the fall. Um, might be, might give you a couple of extra games there for some of your fall sports. In terms of parents. Um, you know, a lot of the messaging to parents is is what, you know, well, first to the issue of self-assessment. You've been talking to the state and there are a number of apps out there, like it would be nice if if employers and schools and a lot of our facilities were using the same app. They're very simple apps, like I think an investment in a very simple app. That, you know, if you wanted to be really strict about your sick policy, that people actually have to fill out that information. It's just a couple of questions. Uh, before they can enter a school and then they're sorted into you need to stay home versus or you, it it quickly sorts them. Um, the school, the the state has been discussing this, but these, you know, these simple apps are available. Now, and you're going to see them pop up during the summer that just ask you if you have any symptoms or is anyone else sick at home? Um, to me, focusing on that part of the pathway, that self-assessment and how you assure yourself that that's been done. It's going to be better than temperature assessment. Temperature assessment may find you a few kids. But that assessment of symptoms is actually the most important thing. Um, that you're going to do because that's going to help you sort both both the staff and the kids. When kids return home from school. I have thought about, there are some situations where, um. There are immunocompromised parents at home and they're just not going to feel safe. It's just going to be too high risk. Someone who's undergoing cancer treatment, elderly grandparent with lots of health conditions, and you may need to accommodate them with with plans for remote learning. Um, if they can't do it. A lot of these families are self-selecting out as well, too. They may be sending kids to a private school or doing cyber school. But I do think you need to think about that 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 small group. Your special needs kids, um, when you go to online learning, the kids that need to be in school. And should not go to online learning are the ones receiving services in school. And so you should focus on keeping the kids with special needs and receiving special services. Um, in school, even when other kids go to to online because because you just can't do those types of services. For kids uh online. And so there's been a lot of discussion about the kids with special education needs. Um, and then finally, in terms of educating parents, when the kids come home from school, I think you can do some simple messaging. Which is they get off the bus, you clean, you know, uh, you clean the books, kids go right to the shower, right? Uh, I do this every every week when I, when I come home from my practice. I'm seeing kids who have been exposed, some have been exposed, some well kids. We have a routine in our house that we do that, um, to try to protect each other. Um, and uh from from a transmission within the household. And so that's the best that we're going to be able to do. And people have to understand they're accommodating some risk, but the likelihood. Of transmission from a child to them is going to be smaller. Uh, particularly if they're doing the hygiene stuff. And if the child does become symptomatic, then to quarantine them in, you know, at home. And and mask their child in their common areas so that they can reduce the likelihood of transmission within the household.
Antoinette, another question?
Yeah, um, and this might be in the sports guidance. I guess it's kind of similar, but, um. Is there specific guidance about things like recess? Um, you know, I, a lot of our kids, I think, really like.
Never, okay, yeah, outdoor transmission, outdoor transmission is less. We've even seen from the demonstrations in Philadelphia after the George Floyd murder, we have not seen a big uptick in cases. So. To me, I don't worry as much about the outdoor activities. And if you limit it, the amount of time that they're doing those activities, it also limits the time exposure. That a child might have. And then if you've done a nice job with symptom assessment, the likelihood of a. Of an exposure, a significant transmission event happening is less. It's not zero. But I think that, you know, recess is, you know, is part of school and I don't think you can keep a kid sitting in their desk all day. I don't think that's a practical solution. So you're going to have to accommodate some risk there.
Kristen, another question?
Um, just related to recess, um, going back to fomite transmission, how do you feel about playground equipment?
Disinfection, disinfection and disinfection. I mean, you know, you just have to frequently disinfect throughout the day. But I don't think the likelihood of transmission is is high from playground equipment. Uh, actually, there was a whole kerfuffle, if you remember with the CDC, someone came out and said. Oh, transmission is not high from fomites. They were referring to a nuance. It's high, it's person-to-person fomite, that's probably a higher. Kid touches, you know, you touch someone else or you, uh, you have body fluids and then someone touches their face. The likelihood of transmission from the surface, um, you know, as over time, there's been a lot of controversy as to whether truly like, like your mail or your groceries, like people go to great lengths. The likelihood of a transmission event there is actually really small.
Thank you.
But I still would be doing disinfection. It's an easy solution and it doesn't take a lot of time, right?
Antoinette, did I cut you off?
No, um, I I think he answered it. I was just making sure that his recommendation was that recess is mostly okay.
Any other questions from the board? Dr. Rubin, I'd just like to touch on one thing. I know I, you you had mentioned temperature earlier and I saw in the Bucks County. Health Department report, they recommended that uh parents. Take the kids' temperature before they kick them out the door in the morning. And I know that there are. Other, other places where they're, you know, especially overseas, we've seen pictures of them. Uh, taking the kids' temperature as they come into the building. What are your thoughts on on that one?
Sure, if you assume everyone has a thermometer, right, or can afford a thermometer, right? Um, and, uh. But to me, since, I mean. I've taken care of kids for a long time. Parents know when their kids kind of have a fever or they're symptomatic, right? Uh, I think if you want to be cautious, you could recommend it, but I, but I think to more, the symptom surveillance screen is really what you you need to talk about there, right? Kid has a fever, the kid's not going to feel that well, right?
Any other questions from the board? I'd just like to say that, you know, I get the impression that you eat, sleep and dream this stuff. You you've been a very valuable. Uh, understandable, well-spoken, uh, expert for us this evening and I. I I think the whole board really appreciates you spending time with us and my guess is that. The parents and families of the sixty-five hundred kids, uh, you know, they're, they've been hanging on every word, so. Uh, we may see you again before we get to uh our ten-week countdown to September. Um, but thank you very, very much for for being a a resource for us this evening.
Right, I'll just close by saying that, you know, there is, there's nothing I could tell you tonight that's going to reduce the risk to zero. Um, the, I feel pretty good about the kids. I mean, it's the parents and the teachers and the staff I worry about more, but even the kids, you're going to have the rare exception where someone gets sick. We've had a few kids come in with that serious inflammatory syndrome. Fortunately, we've been able to treat them. And been mindful of parents when the kids are sick, getting them to the doctor. To do that, but we also have recognized that for working families, schools are extremely important. It's also important for equity issues in terms of a kid's not falling behind, uh, workforce participation. Um, and so, you know, we have to accommodate to these risks because there are real accumulating risks on the other side for our working families. And so. Uh, there's no perfect solution. You just have to make the best call uh that you can make and then try to mitigate and and contain risk where you can.
Before we let you go, I just want to mention for the benefit of the board and and for members of the public. If you'll bear with me, uh, the Pennsylvania School Boards Association for the past several weeks has been participating in a task force. With virtually all of the other education organizations at the state level. They had about a hundred and fifty people uh in ten different task forces looking at. All different aspects of uh of of this. Quagmire that we're looking at to reopen schools and they issued a report about middle of the day today, which. Haven't had a chance to look at yet. It's a hundred and thirty-five pages, so that's going to go into the mix, too.
Sounds good. All right. Well, good luck and let me know if you need anything.
Thanks very much.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is a little more low-key. We'll have Ken Matthews.
Actually, Mr. Feinberg, if I can, my remarks will dovetail a little bit of what Dr. Rubin had talked about, so. I was going to jump in here.
Great.
Makes more sense to deliver them, to deliver them now. And to to keep me on, keep me focused, uh, we did take a few of that and just put them into into a. Um, presentation that I'm going to go through rather quickly. Uh, so want to go back to what actually our public comment that Anna read for us earlier in the meeting. And I want to let everyone know. One of our options is not closing school. That's what we will not, and and I said this back in. The end of February or sometime sometime the beginning of March. We're not going to close school unless someone tells us that we have to. Uh, our job is to look to see what, how we can work within the parent, within the parameters. Uh, but if if the decision to close the school is left up to the to the district, I would not be coming to you with that, with that recommendation. All of our conversations and and the work that we are undertaking in the district really is a planning process to look at. How will we open uh schools? So with that in mind, we'll go to the next slide. Um, just and just as you mentioned, there are a number of guiding reports that are out there. Last week, we received um guidelines from the Department of Education. Earlier this week, um, we didn't receive them ourselves because we were in Delaware County, but the Bucks County Board of Health. Issued guidelines, which I can say Delaware County has reached out to and the superintendents will continue to reach out to Chester County. Uh, and ask if they can take a look at those guidelines and see if something can be produced through Chester County. Uh, what you just mentioned there about the educational organizations, the ten different task forces with about a hundred and fifty people. That's what's referred to as the P groups. Um, and that was, that report just came out today. Uh, and in our briefing from the Secretary of Education this afternoon, he indicated that the Department of Ed will be updating their guidelines. Uh, and the update will be coming out next week and and hopefully with. A little more specificity than than what we have, you know, have previously have previously had. It was very helpful for us to hear from Dr. Rubin tonight because the one thing to keep in mind is all of these different sources. Are just that guidelines. Uh, there is no hard and fast, the school must do this or the school must do that, even. Within the Pennsylvania Educate Department of Ed guidelines, although all throughout, it talks about six feet. You know, keeping kids apart, keeping desks apart, six feet. It does every so often, you will see the words in there, wherever possible. Or to the extent possible, my new favorite words, to the extent possible. So our hope is that we will get a little more guidance from the Department of Ed. Um, and to have folks like Dr. Rubin to depend upon. Because I have a feeling that when we come with our plan, we're not going to be able to say we're doing this because this group says we must. That it's like we're, we've made the decision to configure our schools this way, or we've made the decision to um serve lunch this way or. Um, provide transportation this way and we'll be saying, you know, because and giving the rationale for what our thinking was behind that. But so, in case folks have not seen it, that guidance, and we'll go to the next, that guidance for the Bucks County schools, the reason why everyone is talking about it so much. Is it actually, the language is actually a little bit stronger, you know, temperature screening will not be required. Buses can operate with two students per seat. It sounds silly, but that's huge. That is huge to put, and you'll see in a moment when we show you some pictures. Wearing masks will not be required, a minimum of three feet for, you know, for social distancing. And this is the first first set of guidelines where we have seen anyone even talking about using a cafeteria to to serve lunch. Everything that we've seen to date references students eating their lunch in the in the classroom. So I think, I think these five bullets that are here really highlight why there has been so much interest and discussion. Uh, and I just wanted to put those up on on the screen in case anyone had not seen them to date. So what is our district doing? Um, we have eight task force groups uh that have been formed and you can see through those bullets there. Uh, what those groups are focusing on. Depending on the nature and scope of the work, there can be three people on that. We're up to six people. Um, we are using all administrators across the across the district. Uh, we have our Haverford Online has its own task force. Our, we want our parents to know now, they do not need to look elsewhere, even if they already know that. Regardless of what configuration we open with in in the fall. Uh, that they're not sending their child to school, we have an option for them. Uh, and that is, that is Haverford Online. The program has been in existence. We had seventy-five students in that program. Before March thirteenth, um, and we anticipate that we will have more when we open schools in in the fall. But we have a group looking at that and I'll, towards the end of this, I'll show you why, the numbers that we could potentially be be looking at. So the work that those groups are doing now, because keep in mind, we're finishing school tomorrow. So like, the students finished last week, but tomorrow's the last day for our teachers. So with the school year wrapped up. Um, a lot of what they have been doing is looking at all of these different guidance documents. Uh, that have come out and how are they going to address the requirements in each one of those areas? At our July ninth meeting, um, the team will be here to talk with you about their plan for athletics, to return for athletics. And on our July twenty-third meeting, uh, we will be providing, presenting the this uh health and safety plan to return to school. So just to give you an idea, um, when we talk about like, these are the things we look at, we actually, this group onto a bus. You know, if we were to have to socially distance at at six feet, uh, that picture right there, you can't tell, that's a seventy-two passenger bus.
Wow.
But what, and what you are looking at where you. But what, and what you are looking at where you see the number, the red numbers, that if it's six feet is the required distance, you are looking at getting twelve children onto what typically would transport seventy, seventy-two children. And that's why I said earlier, like the Bucks County guidance, when other superintendents saw it, the first thing people were saying, did you see what they said about transportation? You can put two kids on a, on a seat. So that, from there, we actually then went into uh, classrooms, cleared the classroom out and took a look at, like, if we were spacing desks six feet apart. Um, and that's the same classroom from two different angles. Those of you who are parents of elementary children or recently were in elementary classrooms, you can see that room is pretty much emptied out. So at six feet, we're getting a total of six desks, six or seven desks in there, um, not much more than that. Uh, but we are clearing a lot of the materials that are in that classroom out of there. So then we explored five feet. So what does five feet look like, you know, in that, in that same classroom? And even though it's another foot, it's not enough to make that much of, of a difference for us um, in that room. In some rooms, it would be eight, in some rooms, it would be ten desks that we could get into there. Then we took the, a look at four, like this is the level that we're going into, four. Now, this is getting a little bit better, all right? So four, you can get twelve desks and in a classroom that might be a little bit larger, maybe fifteen desks. If a district had to go to a model of, you know, splitting schedules in some way, and this was part of the reason that we asked, the question that we asked of our parents. If we can't socially distance at six feet, but we could at a, you know, at a shorter distance. We, and, and we had some parents indicate that, all right, if that's what we needed to do and we had to split schedules, that's what they would choose in order to have, have the students there. Um, continuing on that, however, after we got the, the guidance um, from Bucks County, we then looked at the, you know, at the three feet of, of social distancing. And you can see, we're still clearing the classrooms out, that still has to happen. But you can see that now we're getting more towards what our classrooms typically, you know, could fit, could fit students in there. It's encouraging to hear what Dr. Rubin said tonight, um, in that, you know, I don't know that we need to, would need to be as worried about the exact spacing. What he mentioned, a lot of the adults in the district have already talked about. You know, how do you get a six, seven, eight-year-old to adhere to that social distancing without making them fearful? And that's, we don't want, you know, if children are afraid, then they're not going to learn when they're in that, in that classroom. So the closer we can get the classroom experience to be like what children are accustomed to, the greater the opportunity is for that, for their learning. We also issued of the uh, parent survey. Uh, and that survey, we asked questions about this particular year and, you know, and got some feedback from them. But we had a question in there, uh, looking at if social distancing, six feet apart is required, stating that we would be unable to have all children in school every day of the week, uh, for, you know, for a full day. We received four thousand six hundred and nineteen responses to the survey, uh, which is great uh, when you consider that, you know, we have six thousand six hundred students. But keep in mind, four hundred and sixty of the, fifty of them were seniors. So a parent's not going to tell us what they're doing, you know, with their child for next year. We have a survey out now for all of our new registrants. We have over three hundred responses in that, has not closed yet, so that's why I didn't want to include it on here. But the, the piece that I want to tie back to what I mentioned in an earlier slide about Haverford Online, we already know that there are about five hundred and twenty-one students whose parents are considering remote learning. Now, whether it's remote learning only if we can't do six feet apart or whether it's remote learning regardless of what we do, that will come in our next survey. We will be surveying again in July and there'll be more about these logistical aspects, more about the transportation. You know, we're putting, are you considering transporting your child to school yourself this year? That's significant for us to, to get to that type of information. But when you, you know, look at this, five hundred and twenty-one of the responses indicated that remote learning in this scenario would be their choice. Fifteen hundred would have their child in school, uh, even with social distancing of less than, less than six feet. And the blended model, two thousand five hundred and ninety responses. Clearly, we need to dig down, that, that was just, you know, a question that we kind of put together. I'm sure someone who does a lot of work with surveys, uh, you know, might say it should have been worded differently or it could have been worded differently, but it got us that initial question out there as part of a survey where, that we were asking parents to think about how things were this year and thinking about moving forward. So in Jen Sax's next presentation, she'll, you know, be talking about that survey next in terms of, at a future meeting. We'll be talking about the other aspects of that survey and what we learned about the experience for families at the conclusion of the school year compared to when they were surveyed earlier in the school year. So that's why I asked if I could slide in here after, after Dr. Rubin, uh, because I do feel that it dovetails a little more nicely with, you know, with his remarks.
Certainly does. Thank you, Dr. Ruchi. Next is our?
Sorry, I had a quick question for Dr. Ruchi. Um, I just want to make sure, sorry, let me start my video. I know CDC has issued some guidelines on reopening buildings that have been closed down to address concerns related to mold and possible Legionnaires' disease. Um, I just want to make sure that that is something that's um, being considered and that there's going to be procedures in place for flushing and sanitizing of water systems.
Yes, tha- and thank you about, for asking that question, Kristen, because you reminded me that I forgot to mention, we are working with Environmental Control. We have a contract with them. They would typically be, if, if we had any concerns about the environment in our buildings, we've had a longstanding contract. We are one of about twenty-some districts in the four county area. And so an environmental risk engineer has been assigned to us specifically looking at those elements. And that will be part of our health and safety plan to reopen schools.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions from the board at this point? Okay.